We have a forum. I will call the work session of January 7th, 2021 to order. Marshall, would you be so kind as to read the announcements?
Indeed, the meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk via Zoom. In the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting, a device being used by the recording clerk for the purposes of taking minutes. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting?
Yes, I'd like to record it.
All right, Dick. While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you who are not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Our next item is minutes. Marshall, do we have any for today's meeting?
I don't believe, we don't have any on the agenda and we don't, we don't have any to discuss, no.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the fiscal 2022 capital update. Kevin, I know that you put that on board docs. Is there anything you'd like to share with us so that we need to cover today?
Madam Chair, is it okay if we go out of order at this point? We have a couple of guests on the call in regards to the refunding. And I know there's some time sensitivity around their schedules.
Absolutely.
Fantastic, thank you.
I will turn it back to you then, and Jackie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So at our last regular meeting on Monday, we brought to the board the concept of performing a refunding associated with specific debt from 2011. More at a macro level, we took a hard look to see with the interest rates the way they are, if there was any opportunities for the town to find any savings by performing that refund. And Jackie worked with our financial consultant and identified one particular outstanding debt that we could take advantage of, potentially seeing a savings. And on Monday, the board voted to allow us to take the step of solicitation. And Wednesday, we received three bids. I don't want to move too far down the line because I want to leave the good news to Jackie. But there was three, I think, three respondents who responded to it. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Jackie. But we do have an update for everybody in regards to what the end result of that was. And if it's after this session, if it's desirable, we can move forward in quick order tomorrow to get that wrapped up. Jackie, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, sounds good. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Jackie.
Hi, as Kevin mentioned, we received three bids yesterday by the deadline at 11 o'clock. The first one that we obviously declined was from Oppenheimer and Company. It was 2.5%. The second bid was from Century Bank and Trust Company, and that was 1.75%. And the winning bid was from Newburyport Bank at 0.86. So obviously, that was, you know, the outstanding bid. And, you know, we awarded it to them based on the wonderful rate that we were given. So that being said, Lori, who I believe is on the call, she's, Lori Lombardi has agreed to join us on this meeting. And she can elaborate on any questions you may have. But she prepared a comparison analysis. And I know we had talked on Monday evening about the potential savings being between 8,000 and 10,000 over five years. But because of this rate that we received during the bid process, the savings actually generates to 26,000, which obviously is outstanding news and far better than we had expected.
That is terrific, Jackie.
Jackie, the last we talked about this on Monday, I knew the time was going to be a critical factor. And I wanted to make, and I asked you if you could handle that in that length of time. And it looks like you did, and I appreciate that, and that is really good news. Now, I know interest rates are low, but I've never heard anything like a 0.86. I'd like to buy a house at that price.
Jackie, is that 26,000 net of expense?
So the 26,000 is, yes, over the five years, five fiscal years, fiscal '22 through '26. The borrowing that we did for the refunding actually included the financial advisor expense, which I know the other night, I think I gave you an estimate of 2,000. But the cost on that is actually $1,100. And that was incorporated in the bid document that we solicited. So that amount was included as well as there's accrued interest, that there was an estimate in that as well with the bid. And that, I think we used 1,300 for the accrued estimate. So the bid doc that went out was actually for $332,400.
Okay, excellent. Is there anything that Lori, you would like to add to that? Any additional information, or did that summarize it well?
Hello? No, I think that, you know, Jackie summarized the transaction very well. We were very pleased with the 0.86 that Newburyport Bank provided. You know, each bidder evaluates and considers their cost of funds. And, you know, Newburyport, we're very happy that they put in a very aggressive bid. And, you know, as Jackie explained, we ran the numbers. Typically, when we prepare them, we were fairly conservative in terms of interest rate. But we were pleasantly surprised. And then we were able to achieve a far greater debt service savings for the town on this, you know, smaller five-year borrowing. Yeah, so then we went ahead and prepared all of the documents, et cetera, and had them delivered to the town today. We've, we expect to have them up to the Department of Revenue. So this borrowing will in fact be certified by the Director of Accounts, Bureau of Accounts at the Department of Revenue. We'll have those documents up to them next week. And then the notes are dated January 22, at which time Newburyport will deliver the proceeds of the note to the town. The town will hold on to the note proceeds for 30 days until the January 15, 2011 bonds are called. And then Jackie will pay the invoice to retire that existing debt on, I believe it's February 22.
Okay, that sounds wonderful, very smooth.
Just a comment. All the times we've been doing this, I've never heard Newburyport Bank being involved. And all of a sudden, they're very aggressive. Is that, Lori, is that typically what you've seen? Or have they turned over a new leaf, or we're going to hear more from them, or what?
Well, you know, it takes time often for local and regional banks to become aware of this state house note lending program. And, you know, once they do, so we've seen banks participate over a number of years and then sort of fall away. But a former colleague of mine, actually, that opened up the note purchasing program at Newburyport Bank, I want to say three or four years ago. He was very familiar with the program because we've worked together at Eastern Bank. So since, he has since departed, but this woman, Joanne, runs that area. And, you know, I think that they've come to understand that, you know, it's a very good business. Municipalities are a good business for banks in terms of deposit relationships. And now, of course, Newburyport has come to learn that this note purchasing program is good business for the bank and obviously supports the municipalities that they do business with. And, you know, from a banking perspective, it's an opportunity for a bank maybe to open up a new relationship if they're willing to lend a municipality money. So we've seen Newburyport Bank for some time now. And we hope, and, you know, we hope that they will continue providing bids.
Sounds like you may have had a little bit more involvement in this than I thought, maybe. But we owe you a glass of wine, it sounds like.
Well, I appreciate that because I'm a wine drinker.
Thank you, Lori.
A fine wine. So Lori, what is this new lending facility that the state is involved with? This is apparently not refunding bonds, but doing this as essentially a kind of note, I gather, a five-year note.
Well, you know, so the DOR has been operating this state house note program, you know, I want to say for 35 or so years. And quite frankly, from what I understand, no other state really offers such a program. And, you know, it's really been so beneficial to municipalities. It's very cost effective, but there are limits. For example, you know, a Newburyport Bank or other local banks, they're not going to loan a municipality $5 million. But they will do it up to maybe one, two, maybe 2.5 million dollars. Because there's not enough security in the state house note program. For larger principal amounts or power amounts, they're going to want a legal opinion. They may want a rating. But for smaller loans, and even these small power amounts in serial loans, five to 10 years, the state house note program again is very efficient and very cost effective.
Is it usual, Lori, for there to be?
Statute?
I'm sorry?
Is that part of a state statute, this program? Or is it just something that the, must be something that the legislature passed 30 years ago?
Yes, I believe, I believe that would be the case, right.
Lori, is it usual that we have such a range of bids? I mean, one is double what Newburyport Bank was, and the other was triple.
Right, well, I think in the end, you know, we do see that from time to time. And, you know, the market dictates often, you know, participation. But I do understand that there is a wide range. Now, there's an independent firm called Oppenheimer that bid at the far end, 250. Now, as far as I'm concerned, that was a bid that they put in just kind of as a cover bid. And quite honestly, yes, we're grateful for it in case the town did not receive any other bids. But for me, that was, they want to be supportive, they want to participate in the program. But they just delivered a bid to say, you know, if you don't get any other bids, we'll take it, but we'll take it at this, at this price. Now, Central Bank also, it is a very, very consistent bidder. And, you know, I thought they were mid-range, but a little high. Because after evaluation, you know, in talking to Jerry, you know, we were talking about, you know, a 2% in my office, and I thought that was still high. And I thought maybe you'd come in around a 130 to a 150. So again, we were very happy with Newburyport.
So they obviously wanted the business. It probably wasn't worth it for the larger banks.
How will this show up on our books? How will this show up on our books as, as part of our long-term debt? In that, in the same category as the rest of our bonds? Or is it a different category now?
It is long-term debt. It's not a bond. It's what we call a serial note through the state house note program. But it is, you know, it's more than a year, which we typically consider, you know, a short-term or a bond anticipation note. So since it's a serial note, multiple years of retirement, we consider it more of a long-term obligation.
And it's specifically for purposes of retiring debt, as in this particular case, at the end of the program, of a bond program?
Well, we, so we've issued this refunding loan. The Massachusetts statute allows us to issue refunding loans. And again, the state house note program will allow us to issue those such notes through their program. So yeah, we're going to, we're going to take out that, those higher yielding bonds. The power amount that's out right now, I think it's at 3.75%. So you'll be replacing that debt with this power amount at 0.86%.
Great. And so we also need the Department of Revenue's then approval of this because it's part of their program. It's, I'm sure it's only a rubber stamp, but is that the case?
Yes, so typically what I would do is, you know, I send notice to the department, let them know, you know, what the town intends to do, just so that I'm prepared for any questions that they might have before Jackie even, you know, goes out for a bid. So yes, they understood what the town was trying to accomplish. And so all of the documents will go to the Director of the Bureau. And she will in fact certify that this is an obligation of the town. She'll put her signature on it, and that will be that.
You've actually greased the skids already, thank you. I didn't realize that you'd already gone to them and worked this out, thank you. I think we're in good shape. What do you need from us to finish this off, if anything?
Well, Jackie has the documents. We have five certificates that require the signature of the treasurer, a majority of the board, the town clerk, and the seal. There's a clerk certificate. There's an IRS, excuse me, tax form that Jackie will need to sign. There's a certificate also, I think, that accompanies these documents. It states that the town does not have any intention to issue any more than 10 million in aggregate tax-exempt obligations in this calendar year. So these notes are in fact what we call bank-qualified, which kind of garners a lower rate as well. So I think that that's pretty much it. So all of those documents executed with those that require the town's seal, Jackie will then send, she'll take copies, I'm sure, and then send the originals in the FedEx envelope to the DOR.
Thank you, Lori. Kevin, excuse me a second, Dick. Kevin, do we need another motion on this?
I believe the motion made on Monday should suffice. However, if the board would like to, based on our conversation on Monday, like to make a motion in support of moving forward with this particular vendor, it certainly, we'd have it on the record and we'd be able to move forward as such.
Okay, Marshall, could you put forward a motion for us, please?
Can I just ask that question so we know we're getting into? So the five documents that you referred to, Lori, being signed are one for each year that these notes will become due?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
I move to support the treasurer elector to refund all or a portion of the outstanding amount of $330,000 for water purposes of the town's $4,040,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2011, bonds dated January 15, 2011, and maturing January 15 in the years 2022 and 2026.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion?
I'd like to ask one more question. Jackie, Lori just read off a long list of stuff that we've got to do. And I'm much too old to remember all that. So I'm just going to ask you if you're, you're on top of it, you know what you got to do, and I'm sure you are. So this is just a matter of making sure that you're up to speed, and I'm sure you are.
Oh, yes, I am familiar with the process. I've done it numerous times before now. So I plan on being in the office tomorrow. I've already coordinated with Beth, so she's available to do her signatures and the seal. And I'll sign my part, and we'll get everything together and executed, and I'll get it back to the DOR.
Great, thank you, Jackie.
I love to have people like you around me because you can take care of a lot of these details.
Thank you.
We'll move to roll call, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Cant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez's, aye. It passes unanimously. And thank you so much for pursuing this, Kevin and Jackie, and for your help with it, Lori. 26,000 is much more than we thought we were going to get, which is terrific.
Lori, you've been doing this for a long time for us. And we've talked often about the good job that you do for us, and we appreciate it. So thank you for being here.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. It's a pleasure to work with the town.
Good.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you all, bye.
Good night. Moving to the 2022 capital update, Kevin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what you have on board, on board docs is our, our last version with a couple of small tweaks to it. Changed the park and cemetery on one category. And also $250 adjustment on one of the line items, which made the total amount accurate. Thank you, Mr. Cant, for that. So if there is any last comments or anything else that needs to be discussed on that, we can certainly have that now. If it's okay by the board, my plan will be following this meeting to formally submit that to the FinCom as well.
Yeah, I think we've had an awful lot of discussion on it. And it's probably good to put it into the hands of FinCom and get their reaction and feedback and go from there. Does that sound okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one, one question. How is the police cruiser going forward? Because we had a discussion about that, and so there was a decision to be made. But how are we pushing that forward?
Certainly, so as you know, the budget for the police cruiser, we still have it raised and appropriate the full cost of a purchase of a police cruiser.
And that's what you guys submit?
That'll be what's submitted.
That's the question, thank you.
Yep, great. Moving on to the 2022 budget update, Kevin?
Yes, so today's the big day.
Fast reader, I tell you, in the last 20 minutes here.
So it was, I have to, right off the top, just a big, big, big thank you to Catherine Gabriel, who poured herself into this over the last week. We changed our schedule a little bit this year. And we had all the budgets due at one time versus staggering them. And it did compound the amount of hours that we put into it. Catherine and I were texting even as late as last night, about 12, 12:30 a.m. So we were, we were putting those final touches to make sure that all the checks and the balances were addressed in the budget. But tonight, I'm honored to be able to present to the Select Board, formally, the version one, fiscal 2022 operating budget. If it's okay by the Select Board and Madam Chair, if I could, I do have a statement I'd very much like to read to the board as part of the presentation tonight.
Yep, that's fine, Kevin.
Thank you. Dear Honorable Select Board, I am pleased to present to you and the citizens of Topsfield the town's preliminary fiscal year 2022 operating budget. Throughout the past year, our team has been focused each and every day on delivering top-notch services through creativity and innovation. We'll always keep it in mind, long-term impacts, decisions we make today. That thoughtfulness is reflected in this year's operating budget as well. This year's budget provides transparency and takes a fiscally responsible approach to ensuring the highest standard in the delivery of services to the taxpayers of Topsfield. Many hours have been spent to ensure this budget is complete and thorough. Multiple meetings with department heads to perform line-by-line review of their budgets, onsite walkthroughs of their facilities, and discussions regarding the prioritization of needs and vision for each department. Thank you for the hard work by many department heads. But a special thank you to the town accountant, Catherine Gabriel, for her commitment to ensuring all the details within the budget are addressed. And there are quite a few details. Overall, our fiscal year budget proposal represents an increase over the fiscal year '21 appropriated budget, using the Finance Committee's guidelines to estimate the schools of $976,531 increase, or 3.24%. It also represents a net savings in the salary and wages for Highway Park and Cemetery due to the reorganization of staff. Includes a Recreation Department and a Part-Time Economic Development Planner. Itemizes certain information technology expenses within specific department budgets. Provides for the expansion of facility management services to additional town buildings. Anticipates more accurately the cost of the flu vaccine clinics and other expenditures similar. Includes the resources necessary to support our police and our fire to keep our community safe. Over the coming months, my team and I look forward to working closely with the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the citizens of Topsfield as we collectively review the contents of the proposed budget. Over the next month, there will be Select Board working sessions, January 14, 21, and 28, where the proposed budget will be reviewed in detail. Finance Committee meetings will be held to do the same. A Town Administrator Capital Open House and a Town Administrator Budget Open House have also been scheduled via Zoom for January 21 and January 28, respectively. More details to follow. This is an opportunity for the public to say hello, to share their thoughts or specific questions they may have regarding the budget, or to learn how to budget, how a budget is crafted. And as always the case, the public can call or email anytime to chat on any matter, including the budget, by calling our office or emailing directly. Please note, the proposed fiscal year '22 budget and supporting documents have also been posted to board docs for the public to access. Lastly, Select Board, I am grateful for your support, your collaboration, and your determined efforts to make Topsfield a special place. I am so honored to serve this town and partner with so many wonderful people in the community. With such passion and commitment, the possibilities are endless. Thank you. Signed sincerely yours, Kevin Hertunian, Topsfield Town Administrator.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate it. So we just got this, did we? Because I didn't see this previously, did this just come through?
The letter just came through, yes.
And the actual budget, did I, when did this actually get posted on board docs? Is it, my point is, did anyone have a chance to actually look at it, to ask any questions at this point? Or was your intention, Kevin, to just have us look at this after the meeting and be prepared to listen to the department heads at the work sessions going forward?
Yeah, my intent was to formally present it tonight and then allow you an opportunity to dive in over the next week. And then on board docs, you'll also find a schedule that we put together over the next three work sessions, where we will have all the different department heads present to discuss their operating budgets with us, to answer any questions, to talk through any processes that they may have taken to arrive at certain places. So yeah, the intent tonight was just to sort of formally present it and then come back at the future meetings to discuss in detail.
Okay, does the board have any high-level questions for Kevin at this point before we go offline after the meeting to start to review it?
I want to know if I'm going to get my dollar this year. Line on, I'm right at the top, $5 for the Select Board.
I can't promise you that dollar will have a check with the letterhead of Tops, Town of Topsfield. But if you do, I can drop off, you know, four quarters.
We're going to, we're going to use the copy machine for that.
Exactly.
So one of the obvious tabs that we're interested in is the over guidelines. And it looks like it's in the order of about a half a million dollars. There's more items in here than I'm used to seeing as over guidelines. Do you have any thoughts on that? I know you don't have experience with the past years with over guidelines, but just in general, from last year even, do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure, so the total dollar amount, let me just.
544,272, it's a half a million dollars, roughly.
Right, so we had, it was, it was, we just have a couple of my quick notes on the side. Just bear with me for one sec.
Just your comments as to, you know, you were surprised, you expected it. It's really not as bad as I thought.
Kevin, if you don't mind, if, if, if I'm.
Oh, Catherine, go ahead, yeah.
If you don't mind, if I could just answer this too. I did notice that as well, I did look at FY '18, '19, and '20, just to look at a comparison. And, you know, quite frankly, I think part of the reason for that is that we've in at least three years now of 0% guidelines. And we've stretched these budgets pretty tight. So basically, you still have above guidelines at 0% this year. And people are coming forward and asking for, you know, things that you wouldn't ordinarily see if there was a percentage built in.
Thank you.
So from.
Thank you, Catherine.
Catherine, that's a great response. I don't think I could, I think you answered it. But I'll just say, from my perspective, you know, we did spend a lot of time going through line for line within the budget and really talking about what those priorities for the different departments were. And understanding where we are financially as an organization and the uncertainty going forward, being very conscious of that as we prepare these. But at the same time, based on the guidelines and ensuring that we propose the needed items, this is the net result of that.
Kevin, is this a number that you're still working through with the department heads? Or is this flushed out and this is what you feel is the appropriate number that you would like to move forward with?
So similar, and we did, I'll say this too, we did just receive the. So similar, and we did, I'll say this, too, we did just receive the school budget. And so this budget doesn't reflect what the first numbers that the school provided us. It reflects the 2.75 on the elementary school increase, for example. So with that now coming in, it's sort of that, as I see it, a similar sort of process that we took last year, where we'll go through the different line items. We'll also look at the total financial impacts of new growth, the revenues that we project coming in to try to get us to a place where there won't be an override. Because that's ultimately our goal, we want to make sure we have a balanced budget. And so with the FinCom working on that, and Catherine as well, now that we have a number, we could start to reconcile those to make sure that we're not going to be above. So if we recognize that we're heading in a territory between the school budget and our budget, and it's all one budget, but the pieces of those budgets that we're going to be going towards a potential override, that's when we'll start looking at where are those potential items that we might be able to look to reduce if we need to.
So in this budget, is the estimate for the elementary said 2.75%? That's what's been plugged in?
That's right.
And for Masco?
The guideline, yes.
Yes, and the guideline for Masco is?
3%, I believe.
So in your letter, you gave us a percent increase, which was 3.5, thereabouts. Did that include the over, other over guidelines?
Yes, so the 3.24% for the $976,531, that is the school assumption within guidelines. It is our budget with 0%. And then it's all the over asking then built back into. So this is, if all of the far-right column red items were to be approved, this would be the sort of that worst-case scenario number.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Kevin or Catherine on this?
At this point, no, but I'll have some when we meet next week.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Catherine, for your input on this and all your hard work in pulling this together. It's a lot for us to digest, have our work cut out for us. All right, the next item is the town warrant for 2021.
Yes, so we, a couple of meetings ago, we discussed, just very preliminary, went through the list of the different items that we were considering. There's three items, which since that last conversation, that I've added into the warrant list for the purpose of discussion. And at this point, simply just that, I wouldn't necessarily commit MS4. There's still some discussion I need to have with Planning Board, which is number 12 on the most recent updated, dated January 5 draft list. The next one's the ambulance enterprise fund. There's revenues that are generated off the ambulance service. And if it's certain points in our capital forecasting, you know, there's a point where we will need to invest significantly to replenish the fleet, to purchase a vehicle at some point. And one thought is, you know, how do we get there? And so, timing-wise, this year seems like the right year to have the conversation around an ambulance enterprise fund, which could ultimately help put money aside for that purpose, an ambulance in the future, or other needs for that matter, that are related to that ambulance service. And we're doing some more research into what that, what we think might be, you know, we don't have to necessarily reinvent the wheel, but we want to make sure we have a wheel that fits Topsfield if we want to go forward with it. So we're looking at different models and what might make the most sense. And we have to have the conversation with the FinCom as well, too, because it has a significant financial impact to the general fund if it's moved to a different place, such as an enterprise. And then the last one's the flu vaccine revolving fund. That was brought by the Board Health and the Health Director. In essence, because vaccinations in our budget are line item without any offset in her budget, revenues come back, usually about 90% of those revenues come back through insurance. 10% is given to the firm that actually facilitates that recovery of those funds for those who are insured who receive a shot. And money, because there's money expended on the flu vaccinations, they wanted to have the discussion around creating that revolving fund, which could provide funding to offset some of the costs. The only issue with that is that it's really dependent on good years, bad years, because of that 11% that gets removed, or 10% that gets removed for the administrative side of that. So there are some mechanical issues with doing that, I believe, with the flu vaccine revolving fund. But I did promise I would put that on the list for discussion purposes as we move forward. And then the other items, 1 through 11, are the ones based on our last conversation that are still on the list as of right now. And I will note that the Economic Development Planner, I mentioned that in my remarks around the budget, the Economic Development Planner was one that we discussed last year as being a warrant article, raised and appropriate, but a warrant article. So it's sort of, as a warrant article standalone, it's here, but it's also recognized as an above guidelines within the operating budget as well.
From a timing perspective, Kevin, when would you expect to have the verbiage around each of these for us to start to dig in to each of the warrant items?
I think I have on the schedule, about two weeks out, to start digging into that. I'm hoping I can work on and get ahead of it even sooner than that. And I know I've had a preliminary phone call, sort of game plan session with KP about, you know, what the process will look like this year, just so that they're prepared. So we have our legal team ready at the right time to help support the effort, to ensure we meet all the scheduled deadlines. So my plan is, now that we've got the budget in and the capital, although we have a lot of work ahead of us on both those fronts still, I'm turning sort of the page a little bit right now to start focusing on putting some draft language together for the warrants over the next week or so.
So discussions on some of these items, for example, might happen when we have the department heads in here. I'm thinking, for example, that the water restriction bylaw goes to the water superintendent. So when Greg is in here talking about his budget, he can give us an update on that, and the police chief can give us one on the marijuana bylaw, whatever that is, et cetera.
Yes, that's the intent.
Thank you. Now, as far as your comment on the enterprise for the ambulance service, the driver for that appears to be capital, capital expenditures?
Yeah, it was looking at the capital plan and, I mean, it's, yes, simple answers, yes.
That's what I thought I heard. I'm asking for confirmation, that's what I heard. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't think that that thing is set up or going to be set up to add more firemen or anything like that. So I think it's going to be capital purchases and maintenance to a fire department or building, possibly. But the fact, we've talked about this for a long time, because she raises a fair amount of money, and it goes to the general fund. And then she has to come and beg for the things that she needs to run her department effectively. So I'm hoping that, I'm hoping we can keep that under control, and I'm sure we will.
Any other questions at this point, from a high level, before we see the verbiage and talk to the department heads?
I'm good.
All right, and I think that's all that we have in the work session. Unless, Kevin, there's anything else you want to add before moving to executive session?
Just, I'll just say one last time, thank you to the department heads, all the hard work they've put in so far on the budget, capital, and the hard work they'll continue to do on both fronts, as well as the warrant. We've got a great team, as we all know, and they're working very hard. So I just wanted to say, once again, kudos to them and all their efforts.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, with that, entertain a motion to move to executive session.
Motion to enter executive session, close executive session in accordance with National Law 30A, Sections 21A, under Exemption 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental impact effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, the Board will not return to regular session, and the subjects will be the AfSNI and Police Reserve Associations' collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you.
Could I have roll call, please? Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook? I think that's an aye, you're on mute, but I think we saw your mouth.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Gant? And Ms. Bermudez's aye, so it's unanimous, we'll move to executive session. Thank you.